Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Lakeport City Council, Tuesday, October 20th, 2015. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Matina?
Here.
Councilmember Parlett?
Here.
Councilmember Spelman?
Here.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
And Mayor Shiel?
Here. And LT, please pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Lieutenant Peterson. Are there any urgency items for the agenda this evening? All right, seeing none, entertain a motion to approve the agenda as posted.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We will have public comment on our agenda items this evening, but if you would like to comment on any item that is not on the agenda but inside of our jurisdiction, you may do so during open public comment. We do ask that you fill out a citizen's input form that are on the table when you come into chambers and hand it to our clerk. Please understand that it can only be within our jurisdiction and we cannot come to a consensus on any item that's not on tonight's agenda, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak. With that, we'll be moving on to the consent agenda, and we would be pulling one item from the consent agenda this evening, and that is for application 2015-025 for the haunted walk event on Forest Drive. All other consent agenda items are usually expected to be routine and non-controversial, and we'll act on all of those at one vote. And this evening, we have our ordinances. Wave the reading except by title. Approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting of October 6th, 2015. Approve our warrant register from October 15th, 2015. Approve applications 2015-023 for Main Street Holiday at the lake event, November 28th. Application 2015-024 for the Harvest Revelation to be held on October 31st, 2015. So with that, is there anyone from the public have any comments or questions regarding any of those items on the consent agenda? Any other item council wishes to pull? All right, seeing none, entertain a motion to approve.
I'll need to approve the consent agenda A through E.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, at this time, we'll go ahead and take citizen's input, and I do have one item. Anyone else wish citizen's input? If not, J.R. Rose?
Good evening. My name is Jarrett Rose.
You can please just state your name for the record as we are recording.
My name is Jarrett Rose. I'm the mayor, City Council staff. 2009, I came here, and I had this city council pass a resolution along with the board supervisors on the cost of living adjustments and how it affects senior citizens within our area. I also had a resolution passed at the Democratic State Convention on the same resolution. It's the only one that's got my name, or the rest of them don't have my name, but I did this. And I'm sitting in my house the other day, last month, and I hear on the world news, there's no cost, because of the cost price index, there'll be no raises for senior citizens this year. Four days later, in the mail, my Medicare D, I get a statement from my provider telling me they're going to raise my rates almost $10 a month, and my monthly charge $40. And later on, I get another deal in the mail that tells me that Medicare B may spike this year because of this. And what gets me is later on, I found out the only reason the seniors are not getting a raise is because the price gasoline went down. I mean, why did he thought this would happen? And so what I'm telling you is this, I'm starting a deal to talk to you because these resolutions have to deal, and if you're a Democrat, throughout the state of California, it was passed by the Democratic Convention. I don't know how many electoral votes we got, but I think it's time that Northern California and the people up here stood up for our senior citizens and told them enough is enough. I fought Lebanon in 1958 when the Syrians about invaded there. I was down in '68, and I think it's time that we got back part of our due instead of things going everywhere else. And I sure need your help. I need you to get a hold of your people, call everybody. Mike Thompson, he's no longer in our district. I already talked to Jarrett, and I just need your help. We really need to stop this. We need to really start a revolution here in Northern California, the whole state of California, and tell the people in Washington DC enough is enough. Quit sticking it on the back of seniors. Thank you kindly for your time. I hope you act on it. I know the Brown Law saved me by it, but there's a little stipulation within the Brown Law that says you can't act on it if you wish to. Took me a long time to get that to my head when I found out. But thank you very much, and now I'll go back to order to Kai, Minnesota, Kai. I've hit everybody that I know on all the resolutions. I got seven of them out there. Just please help. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. Thanks for coming over and being with us this evening. Anyone else from the public? Open public comment for any item that is not on tonight's agenda. Come on up, state your name for the record. All right, seeing none. We will move on to our only council business item this evening, which will be application 2015-025. This is approve application or entertain approval for the haunted walk event to be held October 31st, 2015 on Forest Drive. And is there a staff member that's leading this?
Certainly can. Thank you, Mayor, council members. I received this application regarding this haunted walk, and some of the concerns that were presented when looking at this were that the application is asking for road closures in a specific area of the city that doesn't have a whole lot of parking. There was no traffic plan submitted with this application, no parking plan. A lot of the areas that surround Forest Terrace and Hillcrest where this event's going to take place is posted no parking. In addition to that, some of the areas that aren't posted no parking are, they're not curved sidewalk, they're simply just brush that really reduces the size of the roadway if vehicles are parked alongside there. In addition to the concerns there, this is one of the areas where there's a lot of trick-or-treaters, concern if we close the road for the extra congestion from traffic. Halloween for us in the city of Lakeport is already very busy, multiple streets. We have a high volume of foot traffic, a lot of little kids. In addition to that, a lot of volume of vehicular travel, and sometimes that creates a lot of congestion, which is very concerning. About two blocks to the north of this is the high school, and it has its annual Kiwanis Fair for the kids. They anticipate 800 kids passing through that and parents passing through that through the night. And then if you go to the south, they have the Harvest event that's taking place in the same night. So we have a lot of areas already where there's concern for traffic. So generally, this, and although I applaud the applicant, Mr. Yankee, for his desire to do this to benefit the fire victims, we do have some concern for the traffic issues that do arise with this congestion.
I believe Public Works had quite a few. I think it probably mostly covered guess, more you want to add to it, or you're?
I think most of the key items have been addressed. At first glance, it looks like this wouldn't be a big issue when you look at the area up there, but once you start getting into the safety of what happens up there at nighttime, and that, you know, having kids in this community, that's where they go. And if you've walked those streets with the kids, it's tight, just walking past other people. So at first glance, it doesn't look like it's that big of a deal, but once you start thinking about the safety, nighttime, no parking plan, and just increased traffic there, on this night is probably one of the worst nights to have it, unfortunately. It's a great idea. I love Halloween, it's one of those events, but just because of people getting frustrated, you know, trying to figure out how to get around in the traffic, it's just draws some concerns.
Any questions from staff? I'm going to bring up Wayne Yankee, he's the applicant. If there's any direct questions from staff, I'll bring up Wayne. Wayne, on to him.
Good evening, Wayne Yankee, Mayor, Councilman. I reviewed the concerns with the application and proposed an alternate parking plan and traffic safety plan, which I've verbally reviewed with the chief police over the phone. Had designated a parking area at High Street Village with the permission of owner Nancy Rizika, which I have a written permission from her here as well. As well as turning on the lights down there, I mean typically it's dark, that facility has a parking area designated, but, and a lot of trick-or-treaters, they come from outside of perimeter of Lakeport, tend to park there anyhow. So light should be on this year regardless. We developed some park, event parking signs to place on the main street, right there in front of High Street Village, and with the permission from Public Works, I was trying to make an alternate plan for traffic to flow up that wasn't in the congested areas of Hartley and down Forest Drive. So my plan was to put easel type construction signs on the route of Green Street to Hillcrest, which is a wider street with sidewalks for the most part, and there's actually more lighting. I've driven at night multiple times trying to go over this plan. There's more street lighting all the way up there for people to park in an isolated area and be able to walk to the event without congesting the area, so to speak. I do understand the concerns, and I do know, because it's my neighborhood and I live there. I have petitioned the majority of my neighborhood. I have signatures of well over 20 people. Everybody in the exact closure area from the split of Hillcrest and Forest to where it wraps around on Terrace and Forest has consented for road closure, and I have those signatures here for you guys if you're interested in reviewing those. I had also offered road guards or extra lighting in that area. I have access to a construction upright light as well, but in the immediate area, there's no light issue. So where the area where I'm asking for closure, there are three streetlights in that main section. So the concern, I think, from what I understand, is the area is coming to the event, up Forest Drive and then up Hartley. Very dark, very narrow, not a lot of sidewalks, brush, as he previously stated. And so that I couldn't help but to mitigate the main traffic, and that's what I tried to come up with by transferring up Green to Hillcrest. So that's the best plan I can come up with this year. It's our fourth year doing it. It's all been on private property up until this point, and it last year, like I said to other staff in reviewing this application, it did get a little larger. There was people down the street. We tried to mitigate that with construction tape and construction cones coming up. The plan is to bring any kind of waiting line, people that are waiting to get into the event, inside the barriers and create a line inside that section. And then, you know, again, it's race here in the county. Not a lot for the kids to do, so.
Questions from Wayne? So this happened on Halloween last year?
It's happened for, this will be the fourth year.
And on Halloween itself?
On Halloween itself.
And how many attended last year?
We designated between 200 and 300 people. And the majority of the people, we felt like, were in the neighborhood. You know, a lot of people come by and they say, are you doing it this year? You know, are we going to have another haunted house? People walk by now and they're like, yeah, because I'm out there building stuff, you know? And so, you know, yeah, it did happen the last couple of years. It's all been in my back property, my surrounding neighbors. We kind of opened up sections of the fence so our backyard's connected and kind of designated a walk through that way. But it still affected the public out in the street by having people waiting and traffic coming through the area and parking in the spots where you're not supposed to park. And so when I realized that that was happening, I realized I had to take another step to mitigate that last year. And so without the time or the funds and the backing to move it offsite outside the neighborhood, but still the motivation to have a good event and fundraise for a good cause, we decided to try and keep it going. So I do have a designated site for next year already because of this whole process and the barriers that I've reached already, but right now, because of the lack of time, I can't, I can't move it to an offsite location.
Lieutenant, did we receive any calls last year? I mean, honestly, I didn't. I mean, I live on Forest. I didn't even know you did it last year.
Yeah.
I mean, granted, I'm giving out candy, you know, to trick-or-treaters, so I didn't get a chance to venture out, but.
No, not that I recall. I did not do the research to determine whether or not we did. If I could add something to what Mr. Yankee's saying, again, we're all for the idea of what you're doing, but when we, I was present when the chief was talking to him on the phone, we had it on speakerphone. And one of the things that kind of posed a little bit of concern is, even through Mr. Yankee's words, the increase in people he expects because he's made this, all the proceeds going to Valley Fire. It just drew a little bit more concern about how much more traffic we can anticipate and or expect. It could be significantly larger. And I think he even mentioned that it's, he kind of outgrew the area for this type of event. I will say that the parking situation with Nancy Rizika was addressed by Mr. Yankee in there. One of the concerns that poses, if it's a significant amount of people coming to this event who are allowed to park there, then that means they're on foot going up any one of those arteries to that area. It presents quite a bit more of a challenge for us to put that many more people on foot in those back, not-so-well-lit shortcuts and/or Hartley, which is not designed for people to walk up and down, particularly at night, it's concerning. So, you know, it was issues that we didn't address with Mr. Yankee. And again, he's trying to do every solution to try to remedy the problem. We recognize that, and we just have a concern for the amount of people that could be anticipated with this.
So how much outreach have you done in advertising on this already?
I haven't done a whole lot. I do a little bit of social media, not a whole push. I just put a flyer out there. I put a couple fires at places that have already donated to the event. I mean, everybody in the community's already supported in, I mean, everybody. Menno Mill, Kelseyville Lover, Rainbow Ag, the print shop, you know, all those kinds of places are supporting already, have a flyer based on donations to build and construct this facility. You know, so I haven't put a huge marketing push on it. I haven't, I've been waiting till tonight to do that, you know, and get it on the county calendar, on the website for what's going on and that kind of stuff. I do intend to advertise a little more if it's approved. My intention is not to draw 2,000 people into my neighborhood. You know, it'd be nice to have a nice, healthy number like we had last year and an increase of funds for the cause. Last year, we raised money for breast cancer. So, you know, I mean, I don't charge people to come in. It's strictly a donation to come, and you can go through without a donation. So it's essentially a free event, you know?
How much did you raise last year?
$340 something dollars for breast cancer in four or five hours. And we shut down probably at 10:00, closed it up, got all our stuff out, reduced noise. And it was probably, it was doing the link down before that by 9:00.
And this is still going to happen regardless?
Well, that's my question. Are we just deciding whether or not we're closing the road, that this event is going to happen no matter what?
This application is requesting closure. It's requesting extra patrols by police. It's requesting barricades. But given the situation, I believe it also merits looking at other personnel to help deal with this, because if you're asking for barricades, you're likely asking for Public Works to attend it. You're certainly asking for extra patrol to deal with, extra patrolmen for the area, and he's got closures typically starting at 9:00 to set up, which would mean a road closure. I would assume he would be wanting that section closed off that early in the morning.
So the, yes, for in-and-out traffic from out of the area, the local neighborhood is under the understanding, and I've talked to everybody in that strip of closure, that there won't be a hard closure for all my neighbors right in that section until about 5:00 PM. All right? And then if there was any emergency, we have radios, we have white lights we can flip on to light up the area and communicate that, hey, we're shutting down, get everybody to the sidewalks, something's, you know, emergency vehicle, heaven forbid, you know, there's a plan in place for that. I have fire extinguisher spots throughout, two fire extinguisher spots. You know, the idea is to have the event to walk through the road and not on private property. I've taken out the required insurance policy, and as well, I haven't paid for it because I haven't got approval yet. And so I've tried to make sure that every, everything is covered. The additional Public Works personnel, I'm not requesting people to be present at those barricades. I think that, you know, just having adults that are working with me in my neighborhood at those ends of the street are sufficient. I don't know if there's special requirements by Public Works for personnel to attend a barricade?
Yes, usually, and the reason being is because it's a street closure, and they represent the city.
Okay.
Since it's a legal street closure, really, one of our representatives has to be there, because the last thing you want is some, an altercation happening with someone that's not an employee of the city.
Right.
And doesn't have any official capacity. So usually, it is either a police volunteer, Public Works, or a sworn officer that's, you know, depending on the issue. Now, also on the street, I mean, if this, the layout, I mean, it will be set up so that an emergency vehicle can still pass on that street.
Absolutely.
Because I think that's a requirement anyhow, right?
You have to have an emergency.
I mean, you have to be able to get a fire truck in there. Well, granted, they would go in there, they would go in there anyway.
Yeah, right, but if you get.
Well, kudos, I'm a trauma nurse, so if there's any emergency at first stage right there.
So Wayne, how do you feel about the fact that you could raise five, six, seven, eight hundred dollars, but right off the bat, we've got figures from the police department and Public Works. Police Department's over 600, and another 300 to 500 for Public Works, so it's, looks like 900 to 1,100 dollars that the city's going to expend for you to do this event so you can raise five, six, seven, eight, nine hundred. Do you think that's a good trade-off?
I think that it is.
I mean, in other words, taking money from the city and closing this down, creating liability and possibilities of, you know, when you have written documentation from the police department, written documentation from Public Works showing that we have exposure, and then we move forward and allow it, and then someone gets hurt, you have a $2 million policy, but we have deep pockets, and then people come after us because we were already apprised of the situation that wasn't a traffic control parking plan that were, you know, timely submitted, and that there's no parking zones, there's no sidewalk, and all these different things. Do you feel that it's fair to put the city in a situation like this to raise less money than what it's going to cost us to put this on?
Well, I, okay.
I know it's a difficult question, but I mean, we're here as fiduciaries of the city, and we have to be good custodians of the money, and it's going to cost 900 to 1,100. Last year, you made 350. That won't even cover the police officer that needs to be on duty, and you're going to make that money and give it to the Valley Fire. That's great, but we're here trying to be, as I mentioned, good custodians of the city's money, and then there's all this liability that's opened up. So I'm really kind of concerned, especially if we see the documentation from Public Works and from the police department, and we know these exist, and if someone gets hurt, then we have definite culpability here because it's in writing here at this meeting. So that's my biggest concern is that, and I know this has been going on, that is, LT over here mentioned, that we have a lot more people that may be wanting to help out, they want to donate, they're going to be walking through these dark areas, and so to me, it's a concern that, you know, the trade-offs for the liability, the culpability, the amount of money you're going to make versus the amount of money we're going to put out, it kind of distresses me, and do you think that that's something that we should willingly just jump into, or do you think that maybe we should rethink this?
So, jump into is a loaded statement, so I would just say that I've tried to address the concerns. I don't know if my, my alternate parking and traffic control plan is sufficient enough for you guys, but that is what I've changed since the initial application. I know that the official plan was not put in with the application because of the lack of time. I do intend to raise more money, obviously, than the last year. I didn't do any kind of social media or advertising, it's purely word of mouth and a couple flyers around town. I intend to also take donations through the site into, into the event without people actually attending. I've already received 125 dollars in donations to start. I haven't even built the thing. I, I mean, the list goes on. So do I think it's fair? I think it's fair to come to the city council and address the people that are elected to represent my city to maybe fork out a little bit of tax dollars and take a chance on a local event that's going to sponsor something that happened tragic in our community, that's going to help provide something for the kids to do in our neighborhood. They don't do the haunted house at the fairgrounds anymore. So, you know, I think, I think it is fair to ask. I do.
Yeah, and you realize that there's two events within, you know, Stone's throw both the coast, both one north and south.
And I think that what you're going to find is just the same amount of people going through all of that, you know? So you're looking 19th to the high school, which is pretty typical of my neighborhood to begin with, without anything, without any extra patrols or extra lighting or, you know, without that stuff. And this section of the street really has nothing to do with traffic flow. I mean, it's kind of a little roundabout. If anything, it's a dangerous section because people think they can cut people off and speed around the corner. It happens in front of my house all the time, people going to schools. So that's another reason why I want to close. Like I don't, you know, so.
I just want to be clear that I'm, that I really appreciate what you're trying to do, and I'm just trying to make the best decision for the city and for all concerned, but I really appreciate this.
Hey, I appreciate the feedback, and I'm trying to do the best to make it the safest, less liable incident that we, or incident, sorry, less liable, or less liability type of fundraiser and that kind of thing, so.
Will we have, I mean, I assume we're going to have Public Works staff at the other street closure for the other event on Miller?
We work on setting that up. I believe it's earlier in the day, and then we have the barricade. I believe the police might help assist in pulling the barricades out at nighttime.
But do we have staff on hand at that one?
Not at the time to take it down, so we may need to have staff. So we can set it up in the daytime, but coming, we'd have to have staff to come in and possibly assist with traffic control with the PD is the other aspect. So we can get it set up during the daytime for both events, but it's, if we're needing to come in and assist with the volunteers or with the sworn officers.
What was chief's bottom line? Does he want the street open?
Yeah, he's, he would rather not have the closure due to the concerns that I cited.
So if we don't close the street, do you still have the event, or how does that work?
Well, you know, I don't, I don't really want to go against the grain, so to speak, but, you know, there's a possibility I could still do something on private property that would draw people.
Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of time to keep messing with it this year.
No, I understand.
It's such a great event, but we can't go against what the chief wants on the street because the most important thing is the safety.
And I understand, that's why I'm trying to make it safe.
I think we'd all be in agreement, and I think it serves everybody if we have more time to look at this and maybe sit down with you on an event like this and go over these types of traffic safety plans or other things well in advance. I think it better serves everybody because I think maybe we can find other solutions. This kind of came at us really quickly with this large amount of people anticipated, so it was concerning that we didn't have plans in place or the ability to sit with you.
Totally understand. And initially, I thought I wasn't going to do it this year. You know, I had family displaced, I had a lot going on. We put it all on the back burner until people said, hey, why don't you do it this year and raise money for the fire? I'm like, oh, how could you not do that? So, you know, I mean, I have all the equipment. I almost need a whole garage just for this, all these props and stuff, you know? And I would hate to lose the momentum and the backing behind it because we decided, oh, we're not going to do it this year, and then it's an evolving fundraiser that could just grow and continue, and maybe do you have the fairgrounds next year, or the vacant commercial building or something in town, you know, like something like that. I think it's something that's growing, that the community really appreciates, that I don't want to lose that momentum either. So that's the other part of why I'm trying to make it happen.
Well, that's why I'm wondering if you can still do something, and then we can start working on next year with you to see what we can come up with.
Wayne, what was the alternate location you were thinking of next year? You made it sound like maybe you were thinking already of another location.
Well, there's some talk with Nancy, she's got a couple of different locations that were some talk about using the fairgrounds, of course, so they would work with me at a discounted rate to have one of their buildings. It's just the time and the manpower to make that happen. Like I would make, have to take the next two weeks off of work and recruit everybody with an able body to move this equipment down there and start setting up, and of course, rental fees are not cheap, so then the overhead for me comes up substantially. Last year, I invested 17... Last year I invested seventeen hundred dollars into this event out of my own money. So, you know, when we talk about where the money comes from, like, and the liability, like, I'm putting forth that too. So, yeah, I could have easily just donated seventeen hundred dollars to breast cancer, right, versus the three hundred and sixty that we made, but it's twofold, you know? It's something for the kids and the neighborhood and the family and, you know, all that stuff. So it's, it's more than just the fundraiser, so...
Yeah, I think everyone up here has done community service where you've spent eight or ten hour day and you've made, you know, a couple hundred bucks.
Absolutely, right? And I'm no stranger to that, I mean, I'm active in fundraising all over the school districts and, and everything else, so. And I had a league soccer practice to be here, so...
Anything else? You know, for me, Wayne, I mean, I like the idea of the event, and I like this, I do like this re-closure for this style you're doing, but, I mean, for me, it totally rests on our Chief of Police and our, and our Public Works folks, you know, that the, I mean, the safety issues, it's one of those things that, you know, like the crosswalk at Twentieth that has the flashing lights now.
Right.
There have been near misses there of kids before, and, and, you know, we spent some money to put those up there, not that they're going to, you know, be the end-all and save everybody, but, you know, that's kind of how I think the council probably is looking at this too, is, is really putting ourselves out there on a big risk without really enough planning, not that it couldn't happen, just, just not enough time to make it happen. And unfortunately, you know, this being the last meeting until Halloween, you know, even if we did have another week of just hardcore sit-down, there's just really no mechanism for us to come back and look at it.
For sure.
For me personally, I love the idea of the event. I would still personally want you to have it on private property if you can swing it. I understand momentum and not wanting to have a, you know, an event go away, but it's just, it's hard to overlook, you know, the Chief's concerns and our Public Works Department concerns, and they're pretty, they're pretty liberal when it comes to these events. I mean, obviously, we do propose for other events too, but...
Right, that's, you know, it's pretty standard down there.
Yeah, yeah, it's just, it's a very unique night, and, you know, it's unfortunate that it's probably the most pedestrian night at, at the year for the City of Lakeport. So it just presents a really big, big issue of, and it just takes one, you know, one child being bumped by a vehicle or, you know, and then the blame starts being thrown everywhere, so, and that's the only, that's just my biggest issue, it's hard to, you know...
So, I mean, for the record, the Chief didn't have the opportunity to review my alternate plans that I've developed since I talked to him. I know he's not here to speak for himself, so that's unfortunate, but I don't know. Lieutenant, is that, was there any change in that?
Was it in regards to the phone call where you were going to have them park at, at the Highland, or the High Street Village?
High Street Village, right, so then he brought up, he's like, "Well, all the people walking," and so that's why I tried to develop this whole traffic flow, the way people could walk in with a safer route, you know, the more lit, wider streets, so...
Yeah, and as my understanding, the way you presented that is you're actually trying to put something in the roadway to say, "This is for B, this is for foot travel on these roads."
Yeah, that's...
So you're actually looking for other barricades, other...
Not a barricade, construction, I could put the signs, you know, that just event, I mean, on private property, I have signs up, you know, every year that kind of leads people to the haunted house, that's what I've done in the past. And so it would be similar to that, but on a larger scale with a construction easel, a real sign with a light on top so that they can follow the safer route, you know, from High Street Village, so, I mean, that was the best I could do for that.
My concern with this late figuring this stuff out is, is not so much the, just the event area, but also when people come across, or in, used to go in a certain direction and then they can't go that way anymore, they get kind of confused and frustrated, that's where the concern is, is, you know, they, they may go a little faster, even though it's Halloween, it's, it just, it's, it's not a time for drivers to be unsure of what they're supposed to be doing. And when you put out a sign and, it, it just, sometimes signs make things worse, you know, unless you just close that street down, that's better than a sign a lot of times.
So my intent was for the signs for pedestrians, so parking, at a Halloween event parking signs, so anyhow.
Are you comfortable the Chief has enough information still?
I am. All right, well, thanks for your time.
Thanks, you guys have any more questions? All right, thanks Wayne, I know this is tough.
I just want to say as staff that we all, you know, very appreciative of the, you know, the event, but that there is some significant, beta significant concern from staff perspective, but we applaud what he's trying to do.
All right, anyone else from the public would like to come up, please? Please give your name for the record.
Warren Myrick. You need me to spell that? M-Y-R-I-C-K.
Thank you.
I live right on the corner of Forest and Terrace Drive, about a hundred and fifty feet from this, and first, my wife and I love Halloween, and we've had for thirty-five years. We like the kids, we like them, and we dress up ourselves occasionally. We like the people coming through and bringing their little kids and, and having fun with it. But last year was something like we've never seen before. It, it was shocking, it was scary, and I don't think for one minute that was the intent. I believe the intent was for a fundraiser, and I applaud this guy. I mean, I really give him a hand for the energy and the time he puts out fundraising, and especially for the cost. But this little neighborhood, it's a little bitty neighborhood, a little bitty streets, and just a couple of areas that have sidewalks. The whole area doesn't have sidewalks, so that was a great concern, just living there and walking, going for a walk, for health reasons, you know, it's an issue. Last year we had traffic come through there, and it was so much traffic that people would just stop, they couldn't move backwards or forwards, and you added that traffic to the families trying to bring their children through, that created issues between the families and the traffic. And then we had the traffic, the cars blocking driveways, and we know that that's actually against the law to do that, so at one point, we asked a couple of people, "Listen, you can't block the drive," because they had literally parked in front of the drive, and they were nice enough to start their vehicle and say, "Well, I'm not parked here anymore, I'm just stopped in the street." So technicality, but it, it's a safety issue, you know, so we, we couldn't have gotten out of our driveway to go anywhere had we wanted to. We had a couple of friends over for Halloween that evening, and they couldn't have left if they had wanted to. The event was a lot bigger than I think anybody anticipated. It was just chaos for what, with traffic and people, and scary, and it's not something we were hoping that would happen ever again. I completely support it will donate time to have this event somewhere else in a public area where the, the traffic people and the police and the city would be interested in it being run with rules and regulations. So I'm worried right now what's going to happen this year, if it's going to be anywhere near similar to what happened last year. It, it not only was a safety issue, but it was a rights issue. You know, I mean, they were literally trampling on people's rights as citizens when you blocked their access in and out of their houses through the neighborhood. So when you drive up to the top of Forest and you take terrorists and they meet, it's at the top of the hill, and it's just a little bitty area, it's even difficult to go through on a normal day. So that's just all I wanted to say, and I appreciate your time, and I really appreciate the thought that you guys are putting into this, that the coach is putting into it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Smear. Anyone else from the public? All right, seeing that, we'll bring it back to council. To entertain...
So do we need a motion if we're not going to approve the application?
We have our attorney here, do we?
No, you don't, he probably wouldn't deny the application, I would make a motion.
Make that motion.
Anything for council?
Well, having heard it from a person that lives up there, even though the mayor's up there, he's willing... No, I think it's, I think that in light of all the different staff concerns, police concerns, the people up there, I mean, it's a wonderful idea, but man, I tell you, if had daylight savings time occurred, you know, maybe two days earlier and it wasn't so dark, but, you know, it's still going to be, it's going to be one of the darkest days, I just, I just can't see. But knowing what the possibilities are for different culpabilities and the Chief's concerns, there's just no way I can in good conscience support something like this. And I mean, I really give you credit for trying to do it, but this is a really tough location because of the fact there are not big sidewalks. If we're down some other locations possibly where we have urban gutter and sidewalk and white streets and parking and all that stuff would be different, but this is a very unusual case. Due to the lack of time, yeah, I think it's...
Do you have a motion in there?
I'd like to make a motion, deny the application. Number two fifteen zero twenty-four. Of twenty-five, to be, was to be held October thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen on Forest Drive.
Second? All right, we have a motion in a second. Anything further from council? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you can ask them. Wayne, thanks for coming in tonight. I know it's, you know, I know it's not the news you wanted, but if you can still make something happen, you know, turns out successful, I definitely applaud your efforts and, and, you know, appreciate, you know, one of my fellow neighbors coming into the neighborhood too and speaking, you know, we all have to live together, but, you know what, and you will have our support definitely for next year, whatever we can do, if there is a RZICO location or anything, we can help with the fairgrounds or property-wise like that, we'd be happy to be involved and maybe we can help, help even amp it up just a little bit more.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, and thanks for coming out again. All right, our, rest of our heavy agenda. Council business, that was it. Council communications. Council parlay.
Well, I'm hoping that as I've been helping the city fund their coffers, one gallon at a time, I talked to the city manager recently, and I believe, I finally went down and found that my meter is no longer running after my latest leak, and so I'm not going to be funding Dan and all this, funding for the water fund and the enterprise fund, and I'm hoping that I actually fix my leak, and I encourage everyone to do that, check it regularly, find out what their baseline is, and do everything they can to conserve water. I've been trying to do it, I waited till everything was completely dry and clear, and then I found a green spot, and I fixed it, and I'm hoping that I will not be funding the wages of this overpriced city council.
I figured by now you would have actually one of the readers installed in your house so you could monitor them over the house.
Day to day.
Yeah, make sure it's okay. Councilor, Paul?
I just wanted to know how long this water line is.
I don't even know, but it's, it's too long.
I'm good.
Councilor, Karen?
I just wanted to encourage everyone to attend the Kelseyville Clearlake High School football game, not this Friday, but next Friday, because I'm going to actually be on the Kelseyville side that night.
Wow!
So I'm hoping some of y'all will show love and support.
Is that the Laffco?
It, it, yeah, it is. That's all I need.
For ten?
Um, just the Laffco meeting last week, Lakeport's proposed hearing influence was approved.
That was definitely good news.
It only took three and a half hours.
On that meeting alone, plus the other meeting that we had with it as well.
Well done. Thank you.
Yes, and that's really all I had too as well, was the Laffco and APC Transit, stuff still moving forward. Do appreciate the efforts of staff for the Laffco meeting. Guys did a really good job in a really tough environment, so I applaud the work on that, and low and behold, we're exactly the same place we are today as we were last week, except for a little smaller sphere, but after all that, we're doing the same, pretty much. And that's really it, other than, they will probably be over that game, the Halloween party that night, the adult type party before the kids, but I think we're going to cruise over there and watch a little bit, so. Clearlake High School beating the heck out of Kelseyville, I knew that. Margaret, anything?
Oh, so we had a, a meeting last Thursday here with the local business owners in the downtown area, and it went very, it was very successful. We're hoping to do a night construction to help minimize, but there's also concerns some peripheral residents too, so we're still working on a plan that would, would benefit or would mitigate as much disturbance as possible, and we're hoping to be bringing an RFP maybe, you know, by the November meeting to, to start going out for, for bid, a bidding document, so. So it was very, it was a successful meeting.
What's the cost difference on the night construction?
I don't know the exact number, it is more expensive, but it can be done a lot quicker. So as our, our engineer was saying, he believes that we could probably make up the difference in the timeframe that it would take to do it at night because you don't have to mitigate all the traffic going through, you could just get some solid work during those hours, so. But it kind of helped.
And the business people would be a lot happier.
The business...
One, one in particular.
Yes.
Which I've heard from many times.
So if we can work it out, we are concerned that, you know, the residents, you know, that are nearby the area, so we'll have to make sure that we keep everybody informed of what's going on.
We may have to get a hotel for Alan and...
He says his, his room's at the back of a place on Main Street, but jackhammering is jackhammering.
Well, there would be a lot of hours like a jackhammer, couldn't be too late into the night for that, but...
Jack said he's already to move his stuff into the back, do you think? I think they're more excited about having it done.
Yeah, and the more, as our engineer said, that the most noise level is at the beginning, is the demolition. So hopefully we get through that soon and not have to deal with that major noise.
So Margaret, when you talked to the city, I remember Stacy mentioned that she went to one of the League of Cities seminars and talked about the wider streets and the street furniture increased the flow, and did you address that and let them know that you weren't being arbitrary about the width and the sidewalk that has actually been proven in economic development projects that actually increase business and that kind of stuff?
Everybody seemed very positive about the design, and, and the trees, they were very positive about the type of tree we're putting in and how it's, you know, that's going to affect the business.
There was really no argument, and Kevin did a wonderful presentation that described it, people were just excited.
Yeah, it was very, very positive. Yes, and those are all very important points, yeah.
LT, anything?
The report. Margaret? Just that we have a crane coming in tomorrow on Main Street, it's going to be the third day that that section of Main Street will be closed off, and the final day we're completely closed off. They're going to be putting in box culvert across the street, hopefully getting it sealed and open back, open back up. They'll be doing, shifting down to the south to do a little bit, tie up the sewer end, they had a couple loose ends they had to tie up, and then they're going to be focusing following week on connecting that new pipe into the existing pipe, it's going to be more detailed concrete work. We've been working with the businesses out there, Bath, the fishing tackle place actually chose to be closed for these three days, they're the most impacted, and we've worked with the contractor to make sure that the work that is going to impact the business is during the days where he has a minimal amount of business, Monday, Tuesday, but these fishing tournaments, they can start to come in on Wednesday and really Thursday. So we're working with the businesses out there, looking forward to getting, getting them off the streets, and hopefully by the end of next week, I'm hoping it'll be done out there.
You know, the traffic at Eleventh and North Forbes, is that a whole nother level, that intersection, is there anything that can be done to make that smoother right there?
The intersection at the...
Eleventh and North Forbes, so there's like random cars coming off of Main Street, and then people don't know, they just...
Yeah, one of the, one of the things that we added to the traffic plan is, was to put out another notice coming off Clearlake Avenue, because there was getting kind of a loop, some people were looping, so we put another...
Dan?
Two things. First, I served on, I serve on a committee that oversees the use of bomb proceeds for the block, it's at school. We have a meeting on Thursday, which the superintendent informed all of us and invited all of us, as well as the committee, to two meetings coming up next week on their master plan for use of those bomb proceeds, I'll let it be council aware. Tuesday, there's like a work group type of thing, which is like a committee, they have, I think, a couple board members and then others, which talk about, does the whole of the plan and it's being presented to the whole board on Thursday. I believe it'll be at six, so I just want to make it council aware of that.
You sent out an invite for the Thursday one?
I said I could figure it out Thursday, but the Tuesday I believe is also at six, also at the school district office. And then the second, in life, that we've lost two of our microphones here, our aging system is in need of repair, we're accelerating the process of replacements, so we're looking at our options right now. If council has any suggestions as to what they would like to see, let us know and we'll bring options to the council, we have a few on the table, to both enhance the audio as well as the visual display on the screen. And try to get some duct tape on that Scotch tape job. We got a comment on the LACCO member about that.
Yeah. It's supposed to be secret.
I can't tell. I can't tell.
Thanks, Dan. Hillary, anything? All right, if there's anything else, thanks for coming out, ladies and gentlemen, and this meeting's adjourned.